You guys let me know when you're ready to go. They're all ready, I'm giving... Want to go ahead and call the order? The Board of Trustees' Special Meeting for Monday, February 12, 2018, to order. Now if I could get you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever being expressed in our own.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for being here, and I see some members of our staff are here as well, so I want to thank you for being here. This is an important process. This doesn't happen very often, but it is very important, and we all appreciate and understand that. And we want to thank all of the candidates for applying and their interest in serving the district, the students, and the employees, which is a noble effort and very important, and we appreciate that. Just a little housekeeping. First of all, I'd like to go over, there has been some confusion with respect to the process and how we went about that. I think it's important to understand that we're under timelines as set by the Education Code of the State of California, and we can't change that as much as maybe we'd like to. We can't change that. We have a timeline involved from when the individual who was occupying seat seven announced that they were going to resign. That's when the clock starts ticking, not when they actually vacate the seat. If we don't meet that deadline, we're then required to have and hold a special election, which obviously is very expensive for the district. So that's why we really appreciate that all of you have applied and give us the opportunity to select one of you to fill the vacancy. So again, there has been some confusion with respect to why can't we extend it for another two weeks, et cetera, et cetera, and we really just don't have that capacity or leeway. So it's been decided that the list of questions, I'll ask all of the questions, and hopefully, you know, we're going to stay consistent. Each candidate's going to get asked the same questions. Some board members, depending on your responses, may ask a quick follow-up, just for clarification, but we're going to stay consistent with respect to the actual question. We've allocated 15 minutes per candidate, and don't worry about the time where it's not set in stone, so if we run a little longer than that, there's some flexibility built into the system, and we're going to allow for that flexibility. At the end of the questions, I think it's important that each candidate be given the opportunity, and I'll remind you to ask or present anything to the board that you feel is important, that was left out of your presentation, or a closing statement that you just want to reiterate your desire to serve and fill seat seven on the Board of Trustees. So with that, I'll go ahead and begin, and let me see here. There's no set order.
Just address 1.3.
Okay. What's that?
Can you address 1.3 on your agenda?
1.3, yes, public comment. Anyone from the public? Last chance. Debbie, come on. No? Okay. So we've dispensed with 1.3, so now we'll move on to item 2.1, the provisional appointee, trustee candidate interview process. So I've already kind of explained the process, and I think now we'll just go down through the list as was presented in our agenda. Does any other trustee feel okay with that, or do you want to go out of order? Or just stick to the order that was presented? Okay. So given that direction, we'll start first with Tom Hallinan. Good morning. So we'll get right in here, since by our own fault, we got a little late start here. So, are you ready? All right. So question number one. Please describe your public service and community involvement and the skills you would bring to the YCCD Board.
Sure. In addition to serving on this board for 20 years, I also serve on numerous local state commissions and local boards of directors, and I think that brings a skill set of knowing how to work with a group like yourselves, not just with you, obviously for the last 20 years, but some other skills that come to play in those different environments. I'd like to think that I brought some of those to you over the years of my prior service.
Question number two. Service on the Board requires a significant amount of time for meetings, studying issues, and other activities. How much time do you anticipate you will be able to devote to the Board meetings and activities? Do you have any conflicts or problems in attending daytime meetings or events?
Darren, you want to turn your mic on?
Sorry about that. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have some conflicts during the day. I think, as you recall, we used to have a joke that I was the one working stiff still on the Board back in the day, so I do have some time constraints there, but I always made time for, obviously, the Board meetings and other, you know, must-shows. I think that was kind of helpful, kind of rounded us out, actually, and again, fortunately, six Board members were able to go to virtually all the events, and we had that covered. So, on the other question, how much time do you anticipate? Well, I'm lucky at this point in my career to have a lot of flexibility. I'm, you know, the gray guy, the old-timer who has the time and the ability to take the time that I need to do the job. I know that sometimes, you know, it might be a couple hours of prep in the Board meeting one month, and the next month it might be 40 hours with three special meetings and all the preparation that goes into that. So whatever it is, I'm able to devote the time to do the job, and I believe I did that pretty well the last 20 years.
Okay, thank you. Question number three. What is your understanding of the mission and purposes of the community colleges in California, and what are the mission and purposes of our district?
Well, they're basically the same, and as you know, we have to take all comers, high school graduate or anybody who just wants to better themselves and continue their education. So that's our mission, both statewide and locally, and basically, you know, it's access, equity, and success. That's what we're always striving to meet in order to do that, and it's to help students transfer to four-year colleges, or just to gain skills to improve their work set for a job, and everything in between those two, actually.
Okay, thank you. Question number four. What is your understanding of the primary responsibilities of the Board, and in that regard, what type of mentoring would you see yourself requiring?
Well, the Board's primarily the policy-setting body for the district, and the one person that you control, work-wise, is the Chancellor. So that's your main job, is to work with the Chancellor and to guide and direct him as you see fit, based, consistent with the policies of the Board and governing process for community colleges.
Question five. Please discuss your...
I don't think I'll need a whole lot of mentoring, frankly. And I, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Please discuss your understanding of the differences between the roles of the chief executive officers of the district, chancellor and college presidents, and other administrators, and the role of the Board.
Well, it's a hierarchy, and again, as I said in the last question, the chancellor runs the day-to-day operations, and you oversee the chancellor on a, to make sure that those policies are implemented consistent with your direction. The chancellor, of course, then supervises the college presidents and the other administrators. Chancellor also, in this system, oversees central services as well as the college presidents, and it's kind of trickled down to the college presidents, of course, oversee the staff at their colleges. All of this is done consistent with the AB-25, of course, and shared governance, which all the stakeholders in the institutions have a right to participate in the governing process. It's kind of a misdemeanor, they get to participate, not necessarily in the governance, but the process, because you, as the Board, are the ultimate decision body. Some things, like academic issues pursuant to Title V, are delegated to the Academic Senate, but again, the buck stops with you all.
Question six. How would you respond to a concern from a student, a staff member, and a community member about any part of the district or college operation?
Well, I found over the years that it's different for each situation. I don't know how many weddings or graduations I was at when I got a question about the college, and sometimes you answered it on the spot, sometimes you met with them privately later, sometimes you directed them to one of the staff members, and you tried to always, if possible, go through the chancellor. And in some instances, things were asked to be in confidence, and you would have to make a judgment call as to whether you would keep those just between you and that person. If you weren't, you need to then tell them that you were going to pass on their question or concern.
Question seven. If a Board member feels strongly about a matter, but his or her position is not ultimately supported by the Board, how should this trustee conduct himself or herself after the unfavorable decision by his or her colleagues?
Well, first of all, and the main thing is that you need to differentiate if you have a different position, and you say, "Look, I'm just speaking for myself and not the Board." That's number one. Number two, if it's not necessary, there's no reason to publicize that difference. Now, there's going to be, we probably had, when I was on the Board, maybe one issue every decade where things got a little bit heated, but if at all possible, you want to keep that in-house.
Question eight. What do you see as the most important factor for you to be concerned with as a Board member? Policies of the district, including the colleges, faculty support, student support, staff, and/or central services support?
Well, again, the Board is the policymaking body, so the policies are the most important part. But I would say, if you do that correctly, you will then cover the other issues that the other constituent groups are affected by. So that's your job, again, policymakers overseeing the chancellor.
Question nine. The two colleges recently received reaffirmation of their accreditation by the Association of Community and Junior Colleges. Please share with us your understanding of accreditation.
Accreditation is a process whereby you are recognized as being able to provide the service you're advertised to provide. It's just like any other business, and in this case, of course, our business is serving community college students. It's very similar to a financial audit. You know, somebody comes in, a group comes in, they look at your books, in this case, they look at your governance and process, and then judge whether you are efficiently and appropriately meeting the standards required for accreditation. I know you treated a fairly good one last time. It's kind of similar, again, to a financial audit. Everybody gets usually a few dings here and there, but it's very important to then, after the fact, address those swiftly and strongly, and show them that you take it seriously, and that's the process, as I understand it.
Thank you. Question 10. If you were selected to be a YCCD trustee, what do you hope to achieve by being on the Board, and do you intend to be a candidate in the November election to retain your seat?
I don't intend to be a candidate, and I know that you do have to run again in November for the seat. I think I would be in a very good position to be, in effect, a caretaker for this nine or 10 months in this particular role. I think that, based on my years of service and being able to hit the ground running, that I'm a good candidate. I'm not going to say I'm the best candidate before that, but I think I'm a very good candidate to do that. You have some very important things coming up. You've got to replace your finance vice chair. I hear Angie's leaving. There's, you've got some important things to do, and I think I can help you very much in that. I have a lot of experience with those searches. I think most of the time over the years, we did pretty well. You know, some people, you know, we're not perfect, some didn't work out as we liked, but I think that's very important. You have a relatively new chancellor who I was very impressed with meeting the other day. I think I could help in that transition, then if you have legal counsel, of course, I can help you transition to that. That's a new thing on the horizon. So I would hope to just be able to steer the ship for the short period of this term of appointment, and then move on, and other candidates in the room here today and others are, you know, then can run in November.
Okay. Well, you still have a few moments, so if there's anything that you forgot that you would like to clarify or make a brief closing statement, now's the time to do that. We'll give you the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, I really want to do this for this year. It's, you know, I ran, I'm the one person who ran last time, the other person ran last time for this position, so I obviously wanted to serve, and I think that means something. It's great to be interested, but I ran, wasn't successful as I thought I might be when I voted for district elections, but I said that was the right thing to do at the time, and I wouldn't change it. But I did run, and I think that's something to consider. I have the experience, I have the interest, and I have the investment. All of you made an investment before you got on this Board. Abe was on a local school board, Don was on the county school board, and researches things like students would for a PhD, very committed. Darren's been to scores of meetings for many years. Leslie, obviously, with, you know, you and your husband, a longtime commitment as faculty, and Lynn, she's done everything. So I think that's important, and I've shown that to commitment, I believe, over the years, and I think that's what would make me stand out as a candidate.
Do any Board members have any last-minute clarifying questions or anything that they want to ask the candidate?
[inaudible]
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time and presentation, and again, thank you for your, you know, commitment and application to fill seat seven. Thank you.
Love to serve you again, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll move on now to the next candidate, Antonio Aguilar.
A little nervous, so be nice.
But you weren't, but you weren't first, so, you know, there is that.
A little bit.
Yeah. So you just watched the first candidate, so we're just going to dive right in, but again, thank you for your interest in filling the vacancy for seat seven. So we'll go ahead and proceed. Question number one. Please describe your public service and community involvement and the skills you would bring to the YCCD Board.
Okay. First, I serve on the Keys Community Service District Board. It's kind of a Water MID kind of board for our district. I served there for about 10 years. After that, I got elected for the Keys School Board, District Board, and I served as a Board member for 12 years. Also, I, community involvement, I served for Turlock U-Soccer for about five years as a commissioner and different functions in the Board. I coached little kids at Turlock U-10s, and now I'm coaching high school soccer, so that's part of my career.
Wonderful, thank you. Question number two. Service on the Board requires a significant amount of time for meetings, studying issues, and other activities. How much time do you anticipate you will be able to devote to Board meetings and activities, and do you have conflicts or problems in attending daytime meetings or events?
I'm prepared to dedicate as much time as necessary for the Board. I have spoken to my superintendent, and there's no, any issues with allowing time for me to attend every Board.
Thank you.
Anthony, can you pull the mic towards you a little bit? Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Question number three. What is your understanding of the mission and purposes of the community colleges in California, and what are the mission and purposes of our district?
As I understand it, it's to provide access to higher education to our young people in our community, and I believe it's kind of the same as you guys, to prepare our young people in our community to either improve their skills or go into a higher education.
Thank you. Question four. What is your understanding of the primary responsibilities of the Board, and in that regard, what type of mentoring would you see yourself requiring?
I see the primary responsibility is, first of all, to the public and to the members of your community who elect you or that you represent, and to set policy for the district, and work together with the chancellor to provide the education for young people, the best education that you can provide.
And just a follow-up question. What type of mentoring would you see yourself requiring?
I believe just a understanding of the difference between K-12 education and the process that we go through, and the difference in the higher education, just information on a different process.
Thank you. Question five. Please discuss your understanding of the differences between the roles of the chief executive officers of the district, i.e. the chancellor and college presidents, and other administrators, and the role of the Board.
Administrators and college presidents, they take care of running the day-to-day operations of the college and the functions the college provide, and the Board works together with the chancellor to set policies and guide the district forward.
Question six. How would you respond to a concern from a student, staff member, and a community member about any part of district or college operations?
If it was some question that I could provide an answer at the time, I would, but more than likely, I would direct them to the specific department or whoever I thought they could answer the question a lot better than what I can do.
Okay. Question seven. If a Board member feels strongly about a manner, excuse me, matter, but his or her position is not ultimately supported by the Board, how should this trustee conduct himself or herself after the unfavorable decision by his or her colleagues?
Serving 12 years in our school board, we had many situations to that effect, but I always, first of all, discuss my position and listen to everybody in the Board, and once they took a vote, I fully support the decision of the Board as a whole.
Question eight. What do you see as the most important factor for you to be concerned with as a Board member? Policies of the district, including the colleges, faculty support, student support, staff, and/or central services support?
I think, first of all, policies in the district, but after that, supporting our employees and our students the best and the best that we can.
Question nine. The two colleges recently received reaffirmation of their accreditation by the Association of Community and Junior Colleges. Please share with us your understanding of accreditation.
It's a process where they review our procedures and our, basically, like somebody said, our books and our way of providing education, and making sure that we are providing all the, all the, all the support and, and just making sure that we pass every requirement that the state puts in front of us, and to make sure that we are providing what the requirements for that education, for the degrees or they were providing to our students.
Thank you. And question 10. If you were selected to be a YCCD trustee, what do you hope to achieve by being on the Board, and do you intend to be a candidate in the November election to retain your seat?
If I'm selected to the Board, I am prepared to run for elections in November. As, because of my background, I truly believe in the value of education, and I would work towards providing opportunity to all of the members in my community, the opportunity to attain higher education in a degree, or simply just to better themselves, learning how to weld or rewire electronics or anything that they need to do. Work hard to support that, those goals.
Thank you. Well, you have plenty of time left over, so now is your opportunity, if you would like to provide any clarification to your responses, or provide any additional statements, or maybe just do a brief closing statement. Now is your time to do that.
I guess, if, with my knowledge of school districts in the valley that feed to the community district Board, colleges in the area, I believe that would be a great asset to have, the knowledge, also, my ability to speak fluent Spanish, to read and write, I believe also that would be a great asset to this Board, just my desire to work hard and to do everything I can to provide opportunity to people like myself, that we did not have that opportunity to, to attend a college or university for that matter. That's it.
Does any Board member have any questions, point of clarification?
A slight one, and I want to thank you, Tony, for coming in. I'm sorry that this feels so much like an inquisition. We're actually friendly people, but trying to do the formal process. Just a clarification on daytime meetings. You're employed full-time, but as I understood, your employer will allow you to make, obviously you're here now, but, so you do not have a conflict?
I have no conflicts. They will allow me to attend any daytime meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Does any other trustee have any other questions, follow-ups? Okay. Antonio, thank you very much, and again, thank you for applying. We really appreciate it.
I was a little nervous, but I appreciate you.
You did just fine. Okay, we'll move on now to Homero Mejia. So again, thank you, Mr. Mejia, for applying and willing to step forward and fill the vacancy on seat seven. Obviously, you've had the luxury of sitting through the first two candidates, and so it should be a fairly easy start to the process, so we'll just go ahead and dive right in. Question number one. Please describe your public service and community involvement and the skills you would bring to the YCCD Board.
Great, well, thank you, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and interview.
Yes, I've actually been involved in this community for a very long time. I came to MJC in 1999, and I was one of those students that used to serve, which I was doing really bad in high school, I didn't do so well. But I was told by a teacher to go to the EOPS program. And that was like, it saved my life because I was not kind of probably not going to go on the right path at that time. So EOPS pretty much saved me. And I became into a summer program. But it also, it opened my eyes to the possibilities of serving the community because it was basically about that. So I worked in the summer with them while I was still going to classes, learning all that. And from there, I was able to see all the opportunities that were around the community. Once I graduated, I got involved in campus life, in clubs, and attended conferences. And that's kind of where my service began. I began to also serve at programs to serve migrant students like myself that actually came here as children. And I began to mentor kids, to coach kids, to get involved at many stages. After that, I got involved in nonprofit boards. Like right now, I'm currently serving on the Habitat Board, I'm serving on the King Kennedy Board, I've served in the Boys and Boys Club advisory board, I've served in Manos Unidos in South Modesto, I've for service in City Ministry Network. My involvement in the community is extensive. I've lived in mostly neighborhoods where some of the people that we serve live. So currently, I live like a block from King Kennedy Center in West Modesto. And so that's where I went to school, Robert T. Road, Martin Twain, Modesto High. So I've served this community over and over. I also teach Sunday School. So I'm involved in my community significantly. I also sense those reads, a lot of other community-involved projects. But I've been doing this, but it all started back in like 1999 when I, my eyes came open to here. And I feel like I would bring, I would bring bridge-building skills, my experience of knowledge about the community where I have lived, and my experience as going through the process of going through MJC and going through the system. I think we'll serve, we'll bring those skills and serve. And I also noticed that we serve about 91% of the people that we serve are US citizens. But we have, I think we have a little bit of a gap. We have a lot of legal permanent residents that could also take advantage and make us more competitive as a county if we had more of those students coming to our schools. We only have 5%, but I think there's, I think I have skills, I've worked with many of those communities to engage them more significantly.
Question number two, service on the board requires a significant amount of time for meetings, studying issues, and other activities. How much time do you anticipate you will be able to devote to board meetings and activities? Do you have any conflicts or problems in attending daytime meetings or events?
No, I don't have any conflicts. I spoke to my employer as well, like the previous candidate, and they know I would be coming to meetings. So even to this point where I have meetings for other board positions that I have, I get time to do those. But I'm always, I'm committed to this community. So whatever it require, to serve and fulfill the responsibilities of the board and to make sure that we accomplish our mission too, which is to give access, equity, and success to as many students as possible.
Thank you. What is your understanding of the mission and purposes of the community colleges in California? What are the mission and purposes of our district?
Good question. I was reading a little bit about what the mission is, and I totally would agree that I lived through that, which is access. I think one of the biggest things is how do we provide access to all the students? It doesn't matter what stage you're in your life that you have access to coming here. And there is enough support services. I'll give you an example, I want to talk to students about coming here. They're afraid of this institution because they think it's like, oh, it's so hard, it's a college. But I said, there is support for you. I said I would spend at the beginning more time in the writing center and the math tutoring than I would spend in the classroom. And that's because those are the services, the services the students need to be successful. And I think we're doing a good job, and I think we want to just expand that. How do we make that even more? So I do think that that's one of the missions, is how do we serve students at whatever stage they're in their lives? If they're coming out of high school, great. But if they're returning, wanting to get a HIG and wanting to get a promotion, if they want to just learn English, because it takes about six, seven years to actually acquire the English language, which I went through the process myself, and I'm able to do both languages, I think relatively well. And I do think that's what we should be about. And I think that's where our college's mission is, to serve students at whatever stage they're in their lives. Or if they just want to get a certificate, they want to get a higher wage, they want to get a better job, or they want to have bigger goals to transfer and go on to university or other goals they have in their lives.
Question four, what is your understanding of the primary responsibilities of the board? And in that regard, what type of mentoring would you see yourself requiring?
Well, I do think that the board is to set policies and work in collaboration as a team with the chancellor. I think that's the key. Of course, if you do that correctly, I think the other stuff underneath that, supporting staff, students, and all that, I think will line up. And I think the mentorship, I've never served in this board, so I would need to know a little bit more of the workings in terms of how things function. But I think I've served in other boards, so I'm assuming there's some similar processes involved. So just learning the new protocols and ways to communicate within the board and reach out. And I'm sure you have excellent support staff that can help me kind of get going once I get in. But since serving in other boards, I think some of them might have similar protocols. But knowing what the protocol for here would be, we must have one mentoring that we need at the beginning just to get things going and understanding which lines of communications and which protocols to follow.
Question five, please discuss your understanding of the differences between the roles of the chief executive officers of the district, i.e. chancellor and college presidents, and other administrators, and the role of the board?
And I think I kind of alluded to that earlier. But I do think the chancellors and presidents are, they're running the day-to-day operations of the colleges, making sure that the staff has what they need. They're looking out for what potential future issues may come up. But as a board, we are to work as a team, setting policy to support them and support the students. So I do think our role is to basically set policy, help in collaboration with the chancellor and the president to make sure that the other programs and our requirements by the state are met. And that should be our main role. And one of those also as well being a liaison and promoter of the college as well. I think that's very key. And I feel like I'll be a great candidate in that sense because I did went through the process of coming to school. And I'm also like the previous candidate. I speak fluent Spanish and write in both languages, I'm able to communicate. And I came here in 1989, so I feel like I'm doing pretty good in a matter of 20, 27, 28 years.
Thank you. Question six, how would you respond to a concern from a student, staff member, and a community member about any part of district or college operations?
Well, I think serving in another board to think following protocol, like if it's a question that is simple, like, hey, where's that admissions office? Of course, that way, right? But if it's something that has to do with operations, I think you got to go to the right channels, the right protocols. You got to first go with your chancellor, whoever they have in line to go there. Because that's, a lot of issues will be prevented if you follow protocols, if you follow what's already in place. Because if you jump that, then with media and all these other things, you know, it can get really out of hand real quick if you're not following that. But I think it's clear in my previous experience is following that and knowing when to speak and who to speak with in terms of media and protocols, especially in our operations, because people sometimes have a very vague understanding of how those things work when they're really complex and take so much human capital and resources to make that happen. And for you to answer in a matter of seconds, something that you might not be thoroughly, you need to follow, channel it to the right channels and protocols to make that happen.
Question seven, if a board member feels strongly about a matter, but his or her position is not ultimately supported by the board, how should this trustee conduct himself or herself after the unfavorable decision by his or her colleagues?
I think that's always going to happen. I think you're not going to always agree on everything. But one of the things is you're a team. So even though you might not get your position, you're still working as a team. And I think after that, after issue, you got to go to the next thing. And always keep it in mind, the best interests of the students and the staff and the people you're serving. So I do think it's like, it's over once you pass that decision and you got to just stay focused that you're a team. In order for the team to function, you got to focus on what's the future of that and not get started on personal things that might be your opinion absurd, but for the best interest of the students. But it's always functioning as a team is how you're going to make better decisions.
Thank you. Question eight, what do you see is the most important factor for you to be concerned with as a board member? Policies of the district, including the colleges, faculty support, student support, staff and/or central services support?
Definitely policies of the board and the colleges. Because I do think if we're in this board, that's our main job, our main responsibility is to set policies and set pretty much agenda with the chancellor to move us forward. And I think the rest of the, like faculty, students will line up with that. Because if you stay focused on that and don't, I don't think we should be getting into other arenas. I think you should stay with there and support them as much as possible and promote the college and do the other things, but mostly set policy because I feel like that's our responsibility as board members.
Question nine, the two colleges recently received reaffirmation of their accreditation by the Association of Community and Junior Colleges. Please share with us your understanding of accreditation.
Sure, I do think as things get, as the turn for century kind of goes with us, there will be more demand for us to stay competitive as Californians. So accreditation kind of continues to reinforce that we're going in the right path. Because if we don't do that, then we might not be lining ourselves up to be competitive with other states. And I think we're, the reason why we're the economy that we are, I think, is staying competitive. And for our college to get accredited, I think it just shows that we're in the right path and we're trying to stay competitive as a whole state, but also as we compete across the United States and across the world. So accreditation is key to making that happen.
And question 10, if you were selected to be a YCCD trustee, what do you hope to achieve by being on the board? And do you intend to be a candidate in the November election to retain your seat?
I'll answer the second one first, and then I'll answer the first one. I do intend to run again if I get appointed, run again in November. And what I hope to achieve, like I think I've mentioned it throughout my, some of my questions, I intend to bring more, bring the college out more to the community by connecting to more constituencies that I think, I mentioned early, that I feel like we could take advantage of. Because we do have a lot of folks in our communities that could take advantage of all the great services and programs that we have here. And I think I can have that. I love, I mean, I got my BA in education, my wife's a teacher. I'm currently teaching at a charter school. And so because of all those things, I feel like I would bring in the knowledge and the background of serving in some of those lower-income communities and those constituencies where I'm currently serving as board, but also that I've lived in some of these neighborhoods where I think we need to get out there and do a little bit more of that. And also my ability to communicate also, and we're serving about 49% Hispanic population, I think I could also continue to reinforce that, but also hopefully bring in more people into our, into our college, into our district.
Thank you. Well, again, I want to thank you for your application, your desire to serve as a trustee for seat seven. Now is an opportunity for you to provide any additional comments, maybe points that you missed, or provide a closing statement to the board.
How much time do I have?
Well, we're flexible, but you go ahead.
No, I just want to really thank the opportunity, and I want to emphasize enough that if it wasn't for MJC, if it wasn't for this institution, I wouldn't be where I'm at. And so, and my wife as well, we're both alumni of here, MJC, and we both went to the program. I see Hector Duarte is still on campus, I'm like, okay, Hector Duarte was our EOPS director. I think, I don't know if he was associate director back then. But it's just the opportunity that we imagine if we could do that to more people. I do think that your life, this institution has been life-saving for many people. And I want to make sure that it stays the way if I serve, I want to figure out a way to give that opportunity to more people. And I'm just honored to be interviewed. I mean, 1989, not a long time ago, but to be sitting in front of you today and having this opportunity, I'm just thankful and grateful to God for this opportunity to be in front of you today and having that chance.
Thank you. Does any board member have any follow-up questions or points of clarification they'd like to ask the candidate?
I have, I have one question I'd like to ask. You mentioned that you were a member of quite a number of different boards and activities. If it happened that the schedule came out that you had to meet with one of these boards and YCCD also had a meeting at the same time, how would you make the choice of which one to attend?
That's pretty easy because I think some of these boards know where my heart is of serving. And I've been in these communities for a long time. I actually have served with them many other years before actually serving in that position. So I would totally understand that my meeting here would be key. So I don't think I would have any interest in going here because my commitment to them have been not just serving on the board now, but serving in the community and activities over many years, not just in the capacity as a board member.
So does that mean you would choose us?
Yes, of course. Priority-wise.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mejia, thank you, thank you very much. And again, thank you for your desire to serve, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we'll move on now to the final candidate, Ms. Lauren Olson. And again, thank you for your desire to serve and for being here today. I don't know if it's a blessing or a curse, but you've had the comfort of having all the other three candidates go before you. So if you're ready, we'll just dive right in, okay?
All right. Lower my mic, okay, here we go.
Okay.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Question number one, please describe your public service and community involvement and the skills you would bring to the YCCD board?
I am a proud Series resident. I moved here over six years ago and previously went to school in Arizona. I got my Associate of Arts at Paradise Valley Community College. And then I ended up getting my bachelor's from Arizona State in interdisciplinary studies with concentrations in organizational leadership and media market analysis. And I graduated there summa cum laude. I have a lot of volunteer experience in the community. I've done things like Love Series, which is cleaning up your community. And we've done various projects with Series Garden Club. I was a member of this Women's Auxiliary in Series. And for two election cycles, we did a bipartisan voter registration project that I co-chaired at UC Merced, and we did it at Stanislaus State. And the goal was really just to register as many young students as we could. And both cycles, we got over 1,000 students registered for both. I am the division president of my company here, and I run a cleaning company that specializes in model home cleaning and staging. So my company originally is from Phoenix, and I expanded it out here. So I made a lot of deep roots here and am very involved in the community. And I feel that a mixture of my service to that and service for the colleges and young people would bring a lot to the board.
Thank you. Question number two, service on the board requires a significant amount of time for meetings, studying issues, and other activities. How much time do you anticipate you will be able to devote to board meetings and activities? Do you have any conflicts or problems in attending daytime meetings or events?
Like I said, I am the boss, so I can kind of make my own schedule. So I have plenty of time to allocate for meetings and preparation. I'm extremely meticulous and very detailed, and so I make sure to study. And I would spend a lot of time prepping. I did a lot of independent learning through my college career and enjoy spending time studying and learning the issues. And so I would be able to allocate plenty of time to make sure that I'm prepared anytime I come to meetings and as well as being able to attend community events.
Wonderful. Okay, question number three, what is your understanding of the mission and purposes of the community colleges in California? What are the mission and purposes of our district?
The three major values, to my understanding, are access, equity, and success. It's important that there is accessibility to college. I know that even for me, outside of high school, I had the opportunity to go straight to university. But I chose to go to community college because I felt that that type of learning that was geared toward, you know, specific that was geared toward, you know, specific, that was more my learning style. And so I think it's important to promote what the community college has to offer for young people. And honestly, people of all ages, ethnic backgrounds, socioeconomic backgrounds. I think there's so many people coming from so many different areas. And so I think it's important to continue to promote that as well as offering the programs and services that continue to make not only the community college competitive, but also in our workforce, once our young people and people graduating and they transfer and move on to university, that they come and really invest in the community.
Question four. What is your understanding of the primary responsibilities of the board? And in that regard, what type of mentoring would you see yourself requiring?
My understanding is that the board is necessary to promote and protect the community colleges. And each representative has their own area that they uphold their interests as well as mine would be Area Seven. And there's different unique issues for that area that you get to bring to the table. And just upholding the good of the community over your own personal interests. And aside from that, having the necessary policy information to be able to make change. And so that's my really understanding of the board and what they're able to serve in the community.
Number five.
I'm going to ask the mentoring part.
Sure.
Oh, the, the second part too about the mentoring. I am, like I said, a bit of an independent learner, so I know that I would make sure to be prepared at all times. But I do ask a lot of questions and I wouldn't be afraid to make sure that I'm well aware of each agenda item. And I'd love to meet with the chancellor and board members to be able to properly understand each item and make sure that I'm well aware of what's going on.
Okay. Question five. Please discuss your understanding of the differences between the roles of the chief executive officers of the district, i.e. chancellor and college presidents, and other administrators and the role of the board.
I understand that there is a hierarchy and I understand that the chancellor works directly with the college presidents and that the board acts as, kind of, they answer to the chancellor and vice versa. And so they get to oversee the chancellor and work directly. And the board is policymakers and they get to enact change for the community colleges, both here in Modesto and in Sonora.
Question six. How would you respond to a concern from a student, staff member, and a community member about any part of district or college operations?
I would expect as a trustee to have many community members that would be wanting to talk to you. You could be out at, you know, the store and somebody bumps into you and wants to ask about, you know, class scheduling or different sections that may or may not be available. And there's a variety of questions that could be coming to me. And I would, I want to make myself available for that. I think that I would be the liaison for the community to the college. And that would mean taking questions that maybe I don't know directly to the chancellor and being able to discuss what we can do to help these people or if there's a different. So I think it's very important that I am accessible and relatable and I kind of fit in there. I know the average age for a community college is 27 and I kind of hit it right on the nail. And so I'm kind of, I have that relatability with college, college students. I know that both of my future brother-in-laws are either going to community college or going to attend. And so really, the only interest I have is knowing that they're going to have a good experience. And I want to make sure that that's really for anyone attending college. I want to make sure that they have a great experience and I want to be accessible for them to make sure that there is no problems and that they do have the same positive experience that I had.
Wonderful. Question seven. If a board member feels strongly about a matter, but his or her position is not ultimately supported by the board, how should this trustee conduct himself or herself after the unfavorable decision by his or her colleagues?
Well, I do understand that it's important to build consensus and to be very diplomatic. But I think ultimately each trustee understands their area and is fighting for, you know, being a champion for students, faculty, and their specific area and whatever problems that they may face. So I think my first and foremost responsibility would be to my area. And so if that means that maybe I have a different differing opinion or another board member does, it's completely understandable. It's not personal. It's, it's very important to have that kind of passion for your area. So, but after that, I would honor the decision moving forward. I know this is a team effort and it's important to respect that and act professionally in doing so.
Question eight. What do you see as the most important factor for you to be concerned with as a board member? Policies of the district, including the colleges, faculty support, student support, and/or central services support?
For me personally, like I said, since I have my business here and had such a good community college experience, I think that one of my biggest concerns would be for community investment following college. I think what I learned most from moving here is the difference between being in a larger city and coming here. The community is so much more tight-knit and involved. And, but the only thing that I see as being a downside is a lot of times since the education programs are so great, they'll get their education and then take their smarts and passions elsewhere. And I think it's super important to be able to have our students investing back in our community. And that's why I brought my business here, so that I could do the same. And so I think that the, working with like the programs like CTE, the Career Technical Education and the Economic Workforce that partners with different small businesses to help students and, you know, graduating students start entering the workforce and becoming competitive. I think that that would be extremely important to me. Other than being really their, their voice for students, that would be the other most important thing for me. So I would definitely feel that I could partner with both of those efforts.
Thank you. Question nine. The two colleges recently received reaffirmation of their accreditation by the Association of Community and Junior Colleges. Please share with us your understanding of accreditation.
Accreditation, this kind of reminds me of in high school when you'd find out after testing if your school was a meet school or an exceeding school. And I think accreditation on the college level is very similar. And it's important that your programs and standards are up to par. And I think part of that is making sure that the students have the, you know, programs and accessibility needed and the proper counseling and researching different learning styles to make sure that the standard is constantly being upheld. And in that regard, I think both colleges have done an exceptional job at doing that.
And question 10. If you were selected to be a YCCD trustee, what do you hope to achieve by being on the board? And do you intend to be a candidate in the November election to retain your seat?
As being on the board, I would hope to be a part of a group that really can enact change for the area. I think that it's important to engage in really courageous conversations about moving forward with different programs and mentorship efforts. And so I think that I would hope to achieve making sure that enrollment numbers continue to rise in a time when, when the economy is good, that maybe it's not quite as high. So I think that I want to be a part of efforts and our ag programs, strengthening ag programs. We have such a great ag pavilion here. It would be important to me to make sure that people know about those programs and services. I know a lot of, that even when I went into college, I didn't know a lot, about a lot of the services or programs that are offered, the vocational programs. And for a lot of students that maybe don't have a concrete, I want to go into accounting or, you know, I want to go into business, that they know all of their options. And I know there's over 400 different programs geared to different, different future careers. So I think it's, I would definitely want to make sure that those efforts, I could uphold those efforts. And as far as being a candidate in November, I, this is uncharted territory for me, but I would love to be a part of the board and I would definitely take the highest consideration for being a candidate in November if I was able to be a member of the board.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the formal questions and give you an opportunity now, since we have a few minutes, to give any type of response, point of clarification, or just do a brief closing statement to the board.
Well, just to close, I just want to, again, thank the board for seeing us all today and taking time out of your schedules to meet with all of us. And aside from that, like I said, I had a wonderful community college experience and I would, I'd do it all over again, except for maybe I would have been here earlier in time. But otherwise, I would love to serve as your board. I really, I think I'd bring a fresh voice to the area and really connect with the students. I, the time I spent on campus doing voter registration is how it started, but it really ended with me understanding how much these students are passionate about each other and lifting each other up. And I really would love to kind of be that voice for them on a level where I can enact change.
Thank you. Does any board member have any follow-up questions they would like to ask the candidate? Okay, Seenan, well, thank you very much again for your desire to serve and for being here this morning.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
We really appreciate it. Let you get seated. So again, thank you all for being here this morning and your desire to serve and fill the vacancy on seat number seven. The process now is, since we've had the opportunity to hear from you, to respond to the questions of the board, the process now is for the board to move a nomination forward of an individual. And then obviously, we'll need a second to that nomination. And then under board policies, there needs to be four votes in order for any nomination to be approved and accepted. And as you know, under rules of order, the chair does not make nominations. And so we'll need to get a nomination to move forward from my other learned colleagues here on the, on the board. So I will be quiet now and let that process continue.
I have a question for the chair.
Okay.
I would be interested in making some comments, but not necessarily a nomination. Would you like to wait till a nomination is?
No, I think, I think if you want to make some comments now, now would be the time to do it.
Okay. Well, first of all, I would like to thank all four of you for coming. And I think really that you're all qualified, which makes it a very difficult decision for us. There were differences, there are different strengths that you bring. And it's, in my mind, I'm, you know, it's difficult for me to say what, how we should proceed. Like, for instance, Tom, because he has served, he knows exactly everything we do. He knows the answers to everything and maybe some of you benefited by having him go first, I don't know. But I'm struggling and maybe some other board members could comment how you feel that if we pick someone who is not planning to run in November, okay? Let's just look at that scenario and I would appreciate your comments. That to me is sort of a slap in the face to the other three people who have taken the time to fill out the applications, to get the letters of recommendations, to come here today to make changes in their work schedules. If I were one of them and we said, well, we don't want you now, but, you know, come back in November. If I were one of them, I wouldn't. And I think we have some good candidates, so I'm kind of struggling with this. And I'd be interested in anybody else's comments.
I don't agree with that concept. I think that what we want it to be is transparent as possible and give everybody a fair opportunity to make their presentation here. I don't like preconceived notions. And I explained that to someone that contacted me earlier in the month. So I think that, given the opportunity that we have here to listen to all of them and give us the opportunity to make a fair judgment as we see it, not as what has happened in the past. So that's just my opinion.
Okay, I'm confused. I'm saying I don't know what is fair. So what are you saying is fair?
Pardon? What am I saying is good? No, I don't understand your question. All I'm saying is that we're trying to give everybody a fair opportunity by listening to all of them here and not having a preconceived notion. Because that's the way I feel. I look at it as fair as possible and weigh in my decision based on what I've heard here today.
Abe, I'm not sure what you mean by a preconceived notion.
That makes two of you.
Oh.
I just explained my preconceived notion. I would, I would say something, but I don't want to embarrass anybody.
Okay, what we heard today is that one person will not run in November and three people will. So I don't know what you're talking about for a preconceived notion.
What I'm saying is it's an opportunity for someone who was appointed today to gather the knowledge of this particular district and where they may not have the total knowledge of what goes on in district or our policies and procedures, an opportunity to mentor themselves in these next nine months. And if they wish to run for reelection, that would be their choice and anybody else who has approaches today. I don't think it's a slap in the face to say, oh, we didn't select today, but we're hoping that you do run for reelection, or election, I should say, in November. That you have came here and went through the process and you now understand a little more about what it takes to be a board member. And to me, that is important if they wanted to run for reelection in November. Now, to me, that's not a bad thing. And I don't look at it as a slap in the face and I, I don't agree with that statement.
I think we have, I think to move the process forward, I think we have four, as stated. We have four qualified candidates that have shown an interest and a desire to serve on this board. We, as a body, have made the decision to abide by this process. And we now have to make a decision of the four, who we want to move forward in a nomination to be selected. So I think that, as easy as possible, that clarifies what really our, our goal is and our charge is here today.
In that respect, I would like to nominate Homero Mejia.
Okay, there's been a motion by Lynn to nominate Homero Mejia and a second by Abe Rojas for Homero Mejia. So now we will take, I think for your purposes, I think we need to take a roll call vote, is that correct? Okay. So we'll take a roll call vote. Do you, do you care at which end I start with there, Madam Clerk?
No.
Or do you want to do it?
Actually, if I could do it.
Sure, absolutely.
It takes a little moment, so thank you.
Take all the time you need.
Trustee Martin?
I, yes.
Don Vis?
Yes.
Abe Rojas?
Yes.
Trustee DiMartini?
No.
Trustee Garrett?
No.
Trustee Beggs?
No.
It's a three-three vote, motion fails.
So is there a, another motion for appointment to seat seven on the Board of Trustees?
I'll nominate Antonio Aguilar.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee- Okay, so, I have a motion by Trustee Beggs to nominate Antonio Aguilar to the Board of Trustees, and a second by Trustee DiMartini to move that nomination forward, and we'll now turn it back over to the Clerk of the Board for a roll call vote.
No.
Trustee Vis?
No.
Trustee Rojas?
No.
Trustee DiMartini?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Beggs?
Yes.
Motion fails, 3-3.
Okay, so, we will now consider another nomination to fill the vacancy on the YCCD Board, seat number seven.
I'll nominate Lauren Olson.
Have a motion to nominate Lauren Olson to fill seat seven on the YCCD Board, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Trustee Beggs for Lauren Olson, I'll now turn it over to the Clerk for a roll call vote.
Trustee Martin?
No.
Trustee Vis?
No.
Trustee Rojas?
No.
Trustee DiMartini?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
No.
Trustee Beggs?
Yes.
Two yays, four nays, motion fails.
So, we will entertain another motion to fill seat seven on the YCCD Board.
No, we've already done that one.
Do it again, can't we?
Well, I'll, I'm, once the decision has been made by the Board, a good Board member abides by that decision, I'll nominate Tom Hallinan.
Okay, there's been a nomination for Tom Hallinan to fill the vacancy, seat seven, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Beggs, I'll now turn it over to the Clerk for a roll call vote.
Who was the first, pardon me?
The first was Trustee DiMartini.
I made the nomination, it was seconded by Leslie Beggs.
Seconded by Trustee Beggs.
Trustee Martin?
No.
Trustee Vis?
No.
Trustee Rojas?
No.
Trustee DiMartini?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Beggs?
Yes.
3-3, motion fails.
Okay, we have now exhausted the candidates for to fill the vacancy on seat seven, I believe that my recommendation would be that we would reopen the, go back out and reopen the nominating period for candidates, advertise again in the local papers, I would encourage those who applied to reapply, but that would be my recommendation.
Can we do that legally? I mean, we had a timeline.
We, no, we still have, we still have time to do that, and that's why that would be my recommendation, and then encourage the four individuals that applied, if they want to, to reapply.
I don't see any other alternative at this point.
Does anyone else have any thoughts, ideas, point of clarification, direction, desires? Okay, hearing none, that's what I'm going to give direction to staff and the Clerk of the Board to do that, and since there's nothing further on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.